The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the city of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. And before we begin, I'd like to welcome Troop 50 this evening. They are here for their citizenship and the community badge, and they would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tomgotti.
Here.
Alderman Tedgotti.
Here.
All are present with the absence of Alderman Langdon.
Thank you. Item E is Report of Department Head, Staff, and Consultants. This evening, we have a presentation by Garrett Granowski. He is with Bird Scooters and would like to tell us about a proposal to bring Bird to Nina, Manassia, and Fox Crossing this year.
Excellent. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Technology is always fun.
And then you just have to give me, uh, oh, one more time. Sorry about that, Ali. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Oh.
And then can you do my screen now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Excellent. Well, great to meet everyone. Thank you for having me to get a little bit more informed about how Bird is able to provide our micro mobility service via the electric scooter into kind of these smaller and midsize markets such as the Nina of the world, the Appleton of the world, of course, your own community, Fox Crossing as well. So really just want to educate you on kind of what day-to-day operations look like for those who are not familiar with Bird, what is Bird, what's our ultimate goal here. So, and before that, my name is Garrett Granowski. I'm a senior kind of executive here at Bird. I've been with the company for four years. So this micro mobility scooter world was really invented back in 2017. I joined the company shortly after that, in early 2018. When I first joined the company, we were only in two cities in the world. Fast forward four years.
It's faster.
We're in now over 350 markets with over 100 million rides and really looking forward to that. We have the ability to provide micro mobility services to more and more communities now than we ever have before. So what is Bird? Bird is the last mile stand-up electric scooter sharing company. So Bird was really pioneered to eliminate unnecessary car trips. We truly believe that anything under four miles is considered an unnecessary car trip. It can be supplemented with a more sustainable form of transportation. So obviously, with Bird's form of transportation is insert the electric scooter gear. So Bird is a series of short-term rentals that organically move the scooters throughout the community. The average bird ride is anywhere from 10 to 20 minutes. Average distance is about 100. Parking and redistributing, in fact, through, throughout the day. Making spaces, obviously, the implementation of preferred parking areas, also e-scooter parking, bird parking, having additional visual as well, and of course, leveraging data. So we see trends, we react to trends, we know where a lot of rides are ending. That fleet manager on the ground is also well aware of all of this data. But when we run operations, this individual, they do have to be mechanically savvy and they'll be performing all the repairs, the charging. They do go through three weeks of pretty rigorous training as well, but we like them to have a mechanical background as well. This individual, we love to have an entrepreneurial spirit. They will be formed in a corporation to run this small scooter business through. They're supported by Bird, they're trained by Bird, it's Bird vehicles, but it is their own corporation in their lives as well. Last year, these local fleet managers, the country average in United States, on a fleet size of 75, which we probably start to need you guys at as well, they took home $70,000 before off. So it is a significant amount of revenue that's motivating to the individuals as well. So I've seen people buy houses in their own communities with the revenue that they're generating off of becoming a fleet manager for us. Just taking me through a quick day and life of a fleet manager, again, they will have a warehouse or somewhere where they store the vehicles outside of city or off of city property. This is the warehouse, maybe they already have the store fund, maybe they're a mechanic in town where they can store the vehicle. That's where they'll be doing the charging and the maintenance. Obviously, we are a seasonal business as well, so we only operate in the spring, summer, and fall months. We hibernate the birds in the wintertime, in May, so we just put them in storage so they'll be off the street. Operating, operations usually start about 6:00 AM, so that's when we strategically place them in those high-demand areas. Then they will randomly move throughout the community based on rides, but that fleet manager is out in the field getting multiple touchpoints on these scooters, making sure they're in great parking locations, still standardizing, making sure they look great out on public road right away, and then, of course, doing the rebalance. If any bird gets parts damaged or a little battery, they'll be notified, they pick it up, take it back to the warehouse, and perform their repair project. Customer service, there's a phone number and email address on every single vehicle, so that every single scooter where the community can give disruptive criticism to Bird. I think a super underrated resource is our community mode. This is on the homepage, it is freely used for anyone who has the Bird app. It's just that, uh, triangle with an exclamation point, and you can be kind of self-reporting. So you can report one or more things, unsafe riding. So if you see someone driving erratically and you want to report them to Bird, all you have to do is take a picture of them, that's it. That will create an internal ticket that sends us to our GPS aligned with our tech. We can see what rider was associated with that bird at that time and that location, and we can reach out for an educational touchpoint. Of course, we can assess fines and penalties for those bad apples that don't want to listen. But again, we can also find penalties for bird per good behavior as well. The really cool thing about community mode is the badly parked bird and damaged bird, it still creates an internal ticket for us to kind of see who was associated with that badly parked bird, but it also creates a text message to that local fleet manager. So they'll actually respond to that bird within a timely manner to make sure they move it or pick it up and repair that bird. Helps you just open up a live chat with our customer service. So innovative solutions, the parking management I talked about is a preferred parking area where you actually be able to keep where it should be parking these birds in there. Warm-up mode is more of a gentle profile, except on the acceleration of that estate if you've maybe never been on a Bird scooter. The safe start is you have to kind of put in the safe word between 10:00 PM or 4:00 AM, obviously those hours are customizable, to make sure that your co-hang is here enough to be on a Bird scooter. That is kind of my high-level overview, so I want to open it up now to questions, concerns, or wisdom.
Alderman Sevenik.
I don't have a question for Garrett, but I do for the city attorney. Do we need to put together, I see Appleton has a memorandum of understanding. Do we need to change our ordinances in order to have this? And if we do, I'd like ours to mirror the city of Nina because we have a joint municipal court in case we have to ever cite. And then also, you said, Garrett, you had mentioned that you would basically allow these at city limits, but if you knew our community here in the cities of Manassia and the city of Nina, we are like, well, they're our sister city, so we kind of have a lot of intermunicipal agreements and cooperation with one another. So if you had a city limit, I would think that you would open it up to both Manassia and Nina without having a boundary between those, our two communities.
Yep, absolutely, and that's kind of the go-forward plan. If both cities do decide to make this official and execute an agreement, we would like to execute an MOU, as you said. That allows us to indemnify the city, so transfer liability. We would cover you with a $1 million insurance policy to make sure that you kind of have that ease as well. As long as there's no gross negligence, Bird's going to be responsible for everything if it happens on a Bird scooter within the city. So we absolutely love when neighboring cities both move forward and have operating agreements and be able to go from Manassia to Nina. Fox Crossing is also going to be moving forward if both of you do as well. So you'll have that interconnectivity between all three municipalities.
Okay. Mayor, could I hear from the city attorney?
Sure.
I saw you shake your head, so I got the answer, but you may want to give it to the public.
Sure. It is a good idea to have an agreement because then that would set the terms and expectations of the city with respect to this project, and we would have to likely amend some ordinances, particularly as it relates, well, it depends where they're, if we're going to allow them on trails or not. That is particularly of importance.
I guess I wouldn't have a personal problem with that, but if Nina did, then I guess, no, I think we should work with the city of Nina in this. And you work really well with the city attorney in Nina, so, all right. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney Captain, is $1 million of liability insurance enough?
That's something that we would probably discuss with CivMCC, and I do know that Nina is a CivMCC member as well, so we would ensure that we have the same. Right off the top of my head, I would say 2 million.
I know that's what most of our street use permits and that are 2 million. That's why I'd ask that question. Garrett, when you talk about bad behavior and with people that operate these, what does that all include?
Can you hear us, Garrett?
Change when you talk towards that.
Parking and redistributing them back through throughout the day. Making spaces, obviously the implementation of preferred parking areas. Also, each scooter parking, bird park, even having additional visual as well. And of course, leveraging data. So we see trends, we react to trends, we know where a lot of rides are ending. That fleet manager on the ground is also well aware of all of this data. Locally run operations. So this individual, they do have to be mechanically savvy and they'll be performing all the repairs, the charging. They do go through three weeks of pretty rigorous training as well. But we like that to have a mechanical background as well. This individual, we love to have an entrepreneurial spirit. It will be formed in a corporation to run this small scooter business through. They're supported by Bird, they're trained by Bird, it's a bird vehicle. But it is their own corporation, is their livelihood as well. Last year, these local fleet managers, the country average in United States, on a fleet size of seventy-five, which we probably start to see you guys at as well. They took home seventy thousand dollars before off. So it is a significant amount of revenue that's motivating just individuals as well. So I've seen people buy houses in their own community with the revenue that they're generating off of becoming a fleet manager for us. Just taking me through a quick day in life of a fleet manager. Again, they will have a warehouse or somewhere where they store the vehicles outside of city or off of city property. This is the warehouse, maybe they already have a store fund, maybe they're a mechanic in town where they can store the vehicle. That's one of the things doing the charging and the maintenance. Obviously, we are a seasonal business as well, so we only operate in the spring, summer, and fall months. We hibernate the birds in the wintertime, if you may, so we just put them in storage so it'll be off the street. Operating, operations usually start about six AM, so that's when we strategically place them in those high demand areas. Then they will gently move throughout the community based on rides. But that fleet manager is out in the field getting multiple touchpoints on these scooters, making sure they're in great parking locations, still standardizing, making sure they look great out on public right of way, and then of course doing the rebalance. If any bird gets much damage or a little battery, they'll be notified, they pick it up, take it back to the warehouse, and perform that repair project. Petting service. There's a phone number and email address on every single vehicle, so that every single scooter where the community can give disruptive criticism to birds. I think a super underrated resource is our community mode. This is on the homepage, it's freely used for anyone who has the Bird app. It's just that triangle with an exclamation point. And you can be kind of self-reported, so you can report one or four things, unsafe riding. So if you see someone driving erratically and you want to report them to Bird, all you have to do is take a picture of them, that's it. That will create an internal ticket that sends us to our GPS aligned with our tech. We can see what rider was associated with that bird at that time and that location, and we can reach out for an educational touchpoint. Of course, we can assess fines and penalties for those bad apples if you don't want to listen. But again, we can also find defendants for bird per good behavior as well. The really cool thing about community mode is the badly parked bird and damaged bird, it still creates an internal ticket for us to kind of see who was associated with that badly parked bird, but it also creates a text message to that local fleet manager. So they'll actually respond to that bird within a timely manner to make sure they move it or pick it up and repair that bird. Helps you just open up a live chat with our petting service. Some innovative solutions. The parking management I talked about is a preferred parking area where you actually be able to keep where it should be parking the bird enough. Warm-up mode is more of a gentle profile, except on the acceleration of that estate if you've maybe never been on a bird scooter. The safe start is you have to kind of put in the safe word between ten PM or four AM, obviously those hours are customizable, to make sure that your code hang here and up for students. That is kind of my high level overview, so I want to open it up now to questions, concerns, words of wisdom.
Alderman Sevignac.
I don't have a question for Garrett, but I do for the city attorney. Do we need to put together? I see Appleton has a memorandum of understanding. Do we need to change our ordinances in order to have this? And if we do, I'd like ours to mirror the city of Nina, because we have a joint municipal court in case we have to ever cite. And then also, you said, Garrett, you had mentioned that you would basically allow these at city limits, but if you knew our community here in the cities of Manasha and the city of Nina, we are like, well, they're our sister city. So we kind of have a lot of inter-municipal agreements and cooperation with one another. So if you had a city limit, I would think that you would open it up to both Manasha and Nina without having a boundary between those, our two communities.
Yep, absolutely. And that's kind of the go-forward plan. If both cities do decide to make this official and execute an agreement, we would like to execute an MOU, as you said, that allows us to indemnify the city, so transfer liability. We would cover you with a million dollar insurance policy to make sure that you kind of have that ease as well. As long as there's no gross negligence, Bird's going to be responsible for everything if it happens on a bird scooter within the city. So we absolutely love when neighboring cities both move forward and have operating agreements and be able to go from Manasha to Nina. Fox Crossing is also going to be moving forward if both of you do as well. So you'll have that interconnectivity between all three municipalities.
Okay, Mayor, could I hear from the city attorney? I saw you shake your head, so I got the answer, but you may want to give it to the public.
Sure. It is a good idea to have an agreement, because then that would set the terms and expectations of the city with respect to this project. And we would have to likely amend some ordinances, particularly as it relates... Well, it depends where they're, if we're going to allow them on trails or not. That is particularly of importance.
I guess I wouldn't have a personal problem with that. But if Nina did, then I guess, no, I think we should work with the city of Nina in this. And you work really well with the city attorney in Nina, so, all right. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney Captain, is a million dollars of liability insurance enough?
That's something that we would probably discuss with CivMCC. And I do know that Nina is a CivMCC member as well. So we would ensure that we have the same. Right off the top of my head, I would say two million.
I know that's what most of our street use permits and that are two million. That's why I'd ask that question. Garrett, when you talk about bad behavior and with people that operate these, what does that all include? Garrett, when you talk about bad behavior with people operating your scooters, what does that all include?
Yeah, so obviously, we haven't been seeing too bad a behavior in these smaller sized markets because of one of the pure quantity number of scooters. So we're based out of Santa Monica, California. I think there's about three thousand scooters here, and you guys would be starting about seventy-five. So the pure quantity and management is much more easier on a smaller fleet, obviously. But yeah, you can get those riders, especially early on, where maybe they don't know the rules and the regulations, and they're parked, let's say, in front of a pedestrian right of way, or maybe blocking the door where it's obviously impeding someone's walk line. So that's kind of what we've been seeing. So that's why the education of the riders, the implementation of those capabilities, but more importantly, having that local presence, moving those scooters around, and so forth.
What would restrict someone from, what type of behavior? Can you lock somebody out of renting a scooter?
Yes, we can suspend and expel accounts, yes. And we can also pass back fines as well. So obviously, we have their credit card information, so if they keep hearing reported, we can fine them as well.
Okay. What if someone was drunk riding on your scooter? Would that be something you would ban them for?
Yeah, it would just be like someone being drunk on a bicycle as well, so they could definitely be ticketed for having a DUI.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No? You need to... I was just going to look after you, Sam. Are you turned on?
All right. So yeah, thank you, Alderman Sevignac, for bringing that up. I just wanted to chime in very quickly. And basically, I actually, I thought I put a memo in here, but I guess I did not. So the city of Appleton does have bird scooters. They're working on their second pilot year. It's been, it went very well last year. They're excited to have them back this year. So last year, the city of Manasha was approached by Bird, as well as the city of Nina and Fox Crossing. And at that time, we were like, well, let's kind of see what happens in the city of Appleton. It was a little bit later in the year. Because of that positive feedback, obviously Garrett has re-approached us. So the idea here is just to kind of get initial thoughts, if it's worth us spending staff time to move forward in bringing that. And I guess what I'm hearing with no major objections is it is. So I think the city of Nina would be looking to move forward in that and potentially do some sort of MOU as more of a pilot program as well. So I can talk with the city attorney regarding specific ordinance changes if it is on a temporary basis as well. But, so that's kind of the scoop here. So if this is something we want to move forward with, we will bring back an official memorandum of understanding with restrictions specifically to the city of Manasha for your consideration for the upcoming season.
So I'm seeing a lot of heads nod yes. So I think that's what we'll be doing then, Garrett. We'll get back with you and we'll work on that MOU. And hopefully, we'll have bird scooters this summer.
Yeah, that'd be excellent. So obviously, we're seasonal, so we'd be hopeful for a spring launch, and so we can be fully ramped up by the summertime, so everyone can still liking it. But I appreciate you inviting me to your council and really looking forward to the next steps. And again, please don't hesitate to reach out regarding anything bird related.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Night. We'll move on to the minutes and communications then at this point. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevignac.
Yeah, before I do that, Mayor, I want to make sure that at our next meeting, we get our, our desk, because these are not, this is not my desk.
You'll have to figure out which one's yours then after the meeting.
Right. And then, yeah, you're welcome. Just don't eat my Kit Kat. So anyways, thank you, Mayor. At this time, then, I'd like for us to receive minutes A through G and communications H through K. I noticed there wasn't an L on there.
We'll add an L next time. There's a motion in a second by Alderman Grati. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, could you explain a little bit about item J, the Neighborhood Investment Grant Award?
Yeah, certainly. So the state of Wisconsin put out this opportunity for a neighborhood investment grant or fund earlier this fall. We did apply for the city of Manasha for two separate projects, one being the Water Street Corridor, as well as the other being the Lost Canal Project. So we were looking to, I believe the application was sometime in November, and the announcement of that continued to be pushed back. And we heard rather quickly last week that the city of Manasha was accepted for a roughly two million dollar neighborhood investment grant for the implementation of the Water Street Corridor study. So we will be working with the state to bring back an official acceptance to that, as well as hopeful, hopefully, bringing that project to life over the next several years. So I believe the funding for that needs to be spent by the end of 2024. So there will be certainly lots of, lots of investment in engineering and discussions that need to be taking place prior to that, basically from where we were in 2019 to where we are today. So pretty exciting that we were given this opportunity. I think there was roughly like nine hundred million dollars worth of grants submitted and only, you know, two hundred thousand given. So to be one of those selected is quite an accomplishment, so we're excited.
And to be clear, these are American Rescue Plan Act dollars from the federal government being funneled through the state to communities?
I would have to look back to get that exact information, but I would assume it's something in that ballpark, yes.
Thank you, and all of you, for keeping this plan front of mind. And thank you to all the community members who contributed to the vision of this corridor. It's exciting to think about seeing it coming to, becoming a reality. Thank you.
Alderman Sevignac.
Thank you, Mayor. So back to you again, Sam. Obviously, in our budget this year, we really didn't plan for Water Street. So what are we looking for as far as implementation and getting the ball rolling here? Because as you know, you and I talking, I've always felt that that was a priority, and I'm happy to see that we received those funds, but these things don't happen overnight, so...
Certainly. So again, this was a rather quick announcement last week. So I think we've received one email. We have submitted, you know, our audit to the state for their consideration. We will be seeing some additional details come through on that. Next year, in 2023, we did have roughly a million dollars set aside within the CIP for the Water Street Corridor. As many of you are aware, the street itself has been in disrepair. We've continued to push that off from a resurfacing standpoint. So with the two million dollars, the total project that was submitted as part of that grant was roughly three million dollars. So a two million dollar grant and a million dollar match. We are kind of backpedaling a little bit on some of the, some of the costs that were associated with there. And we certainly will have more details as we continue to progress. If accepted, I believe there was roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of engineering costs in that grant. So we would potentially have to bring back, you know, accept and spend type of procedure to the common council for the consideration if we were going to spend dollars this year. Thank you.
Seeing no other discussion? If we could, we don't need a roll call. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item F is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. I think there's a few people here this evening. Connie, if you want to come up? And anyone else? You could definitely follow... Whoops, it's apparently that one that I need to press. Connie, could you press the button right in the center of the mic? Is it flashing? Okay. I think it needs to start itself.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, my name's Connie Conitz, and I live at 516 Riverway. And I just wanted to share a brief comment about your proposal for the lighting on the bridge. We have front row seats on Riverway, and I have to say, wow, there's a lot that happens every day. I can't keep up with the pictures. Sometimes I want to take a picture, and before I know it, that part's done. So it's been pretty exciting. But I do want to have a comment about lighting. We would really urge minimal lighting, and that you only have the floodlights on the part of the bridge that's above the water. We can see that there's a benefit when water reflects on the water, when the lights reflect on the water. But I have to tell you, on the east side, where we live, our properties, we are the only ones that would see the lights on that side of the bridge. You know, there isn't anybody that's going to see beautiful lights, because our houses will be blocking it. And we're kind of concerned that, you know, that those lights will be kind of flooding our bedroom windows, you know. I have to say, it used to be when we would drive across the bridge, there were so many trees, you could not even see the houses. Now, a lot of trees went down, and I can see where they probably needed to come down in order for them to have all, you know, the work that they're doing. But we've already conceded that we really wouldn't like to have, you know, lights intruding. I am, I am not a NIMBY kind of person, not in my backyard, but this, especially when there's a benefit to the whole community, but this time it is in my backyard, but there really isn't any other benefit to the community to have lights on that part of the bridge. So I would encourage you to have minimal lighting. We've just recently heard about this. We have talked to a lot of our neighbors, and they are interested in minimal light. And some comments have been shared with our representative Becky and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, Connie. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi there. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. My name is Paul Weber, so I'm also on Riverway, 532 Riverway, and actually would echo a lot of those comments. This really is, when you take a look at the alternatives that were, that were proposed in some of the pictures there, beautiful, looks amazing. I think the thing that is not considered would be the overhead view. And if you take a look at the angle of what those lights, where those lights are shining, it's right into all of our houses, right? And so, as Connie mentioned, there is nobody who's going to appreciate those lights, least of which would be those of us on Riverway, who we're the only ones who are going to see it, right? And it's shining right into our backyard. So I think, you know, obviously, from an aesthetic perspective, we can see the value of lighting, you know, of how you want lights on there. However, I think you really have to take a look at where those lights are going to be shining. You know, I believe there's also city ordinances relative to light trespass. I'm not sure if that's even been looked at. It'd be interesting to know in terms of the amount of lumens that are going to be coming into our backyards. Has that been considered? I'd encourage you to take a look at that, just of your own city ordinances relative to that sort of thing. So appreciate the opportunity to talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to talk, speak?
Well, good evening, everyone. First time at a city council meeting. Thank you for allowing us to come up and speak. I also live on Riverway, 536 Riverway. I live in what's formerly known as Wally Bergstrom's house, or the one that the crane fell through, depending on how long you've been here. And since we've moved to Wisconsin, we've lived in this house, and we really feel fortunate to have the opportunity to live on the water. My wife and I have moved around a lot. We've lived in, we've had eleven cross-country moves in twenty-eight years in support of my work. So when we moved here, we hadn't heard about the bridge. But it wasn't too long after we moved here that we heard that the bridge was going to be redone. And at the time, it wasn't any major concern, because bridges get old and you got to repair them, right? But for us, you know, the aesthetics of the house, of where we live, on the waterfront and all of that, it just continues to get whittled away with this bridge project. Originally, as the bridge project came out, the bridge is going to be moved closer to our house. And originally, my understanding was it was supposed to have some additional, I don't know what the right word would be, but elements to it that would lower the noise level. But I also understood that that got eliminated. Correct me if I'm wrong. And so, in addition to getting moved closer, as Carol had said, you've now removed a block that used to create a block on the visual of the bridge, right? You took down almost all of the trees that were there. Now imagine, you know, as Paul and Carol both had said, these lights. You know, I agree with Paul wholeheartedly. They are beautiful looking. But, you know, we have bedrooms along that side of the house, and I know our neighbors have bedrooms along that side of the house. And I am really concerned about the lighting and how that's going to reflect into our homes, and continue to whittle away the experience that we've had here, living in Manasha. I would ask, before you vote yes for this project, come visit us. Come stand in our backyard. Imagine it, it is your home. And then imagine all these changes that you're proposing, and how that would impact you personally, as well as perhaps the value of your house. With that, I'll leave it to you guys. Thank you.
Thanks for coming today. Could we get your name for the record?
Oh, my name is John Jones, and the address is 536 Riverway, if I didn't say it earlier.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi there. My name's Sabrina. My partner David Libin and I live at 524 Riverway. I want to echo everything that my lovely neighbors have mentioned, but one thing that I'll say is I invited Becky out to our house on Sunday, and she was kind enough to come over and see not only how close the bridge is to us, but the impact that it has had on the greenery. We used to have, like they said, a plethora of trees and bushes, which are great, and the wildlife loved it. That greenery is gone. We have a rock wall across from us on that shoreline where ducks and their little ducklings used to be able to go and hang out and make their nests, and that's gone. And as we get closer to the end of this build, it has become very apparent that a lot of those homes and areas for these animals, they're suffering. And then now, we're going to compound it with the fact that there are nocturnal animals that will have lights on them at all times. So not only is that impacting us as humans, you know, okay, fine, we can draw the shades, keep them drawn, these animals can't. And that is part of the appeal. I'm thirty-one years old, this is my first house, I'm really excited to live here, but each day I come home and I'm seeing more and more construction, more and more is taken away from what we're paying our property taxes for. So like everyone else has said, please, stop by, see how close this bridge is to us, see what the impact it's having. I understand the necessity for it, I really do. But maybe we can take into consideration different aspects, where we can put the lights, how the lights can be impacted. And the other thing that I will ask you to take into consideration is the Faith Industries light that is on all night, it's blue, shines directly into our bedroom window, so we never have our shades lifted. Now, we're going to compound that with streets, streetlights of the bridge, as well as their lights when they're driving. So just, you know, little things to take into consideration, but that's all I ask.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Our name, Callier, 941 Tackle Street. I'm going to go back a little bit of time, and it mostly comes about Manasha spending money and some, some other ideas. The steam plant's way back, but it seems that we still tons of money on it, so much that we had a bill that was due a couple years ago, and we refinanced it and pushed that out, but yet we're talking about spending, spending, spending. I realize that, that was back then, and this is now. We're still in debt, we're still trying to manage a beautiful city, and we have all kinds of opportunities here. But I just don't understand... But I just don't understand, like, the whiting's burnt down, we had to lean on whiting's for $440,000, and we end up not getting nothing out of that. Maybe we'll, well, that will be a nice piece of property down the road. This is a sore spot for me. I'm on two committees from Manassas, and I'm grateful to be on them. But one of them's the housing committee. And six, seven years ago, we had a paint and restore program, and it was documented, guaranteed, good program, and no alderman would be available because of the way the state law was written. I didn't see that state law change, but yet when there was a $15,000 grant that you could take, if you're eligible, and you could take that $15,000 and use it on many things, and you would not have to pay it back. Well, somehow, the vote ended up 5-4, 4-4, but people changed their votes, and it ended up being voted on, and the mayor ended up breaking the vote. And then all of a sudden, eight elected officials and one elected mayor became eligible. I have not found no county, no city, anybody else that has ever done anything like that where they got that kind of a grant. I mean, I seen one where a guy had 50 years, and they gave him $500 for serving the city out of a fund. So I always question that. I've been beat up on it a few times, but you got to remember, find out how your aldermen vote. Find out what they did over the last two, four, six years. I'm not here to bash them. I know just about everybody up on that table, and they're all working hard 99% of the time. But I want you to make sure you know how your aldermen vote, and what they're doing for. And I, sometimes, like you say, these people want the lights off in their bedrooms. I don't see the lights getting turned off, I'm sorry. It's going to be a big argument coming up, but that's life. I hope we could find a way to elect the people that are doing their job and look into the past to the people that are not. Transparency is not here too often. Here's your chance to be transparent with each other, and look at what you've done. Some of yous are next to sad, and some of yous work hard every day. I hope you can find a way to get out and vote, you know what your alderman's done, and I hope that they don't change the rules where they can take the $15,000 away from you, which I might have seen last week. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Hi there. Sandra DeBille-Taylor, 545 Broad Street. First, I'd just like to comment how wonderful it is to have a galley full of people. I think it's terrific. This should happen more often. So I think, I have a long list of items I wanted to talk about, but I will start with the bridge amenities. I cautioned the council when this was first brought about, the lighting for the bridge is really geared toward the tourists and the boating community. From the perspective, oh, by the way, Sandra DeBille-Taylor, 545 Broad Street, from the perspective of living on the north side of the river, the reflection off the lights will be an issue. This no longer is a primary commercial industrial corridor, it's really converting into residential. Not only the Faith Technology Building is turning into apartments, Bonta's turning into apartments, the canal has the condominiums, and you have single-family residential all along Riverway and down toward Jefferson Park. The bridge, a drawbridge, is a large thing to live with because not only is the boat traffic, but you have the banging and the clinging and the bells, and it is, I mean, the bridge can open till the late hours of each evening. So these lights do have an impact. I had to laugh to myself when the one woman from the galley talked about the Faith Technology blue beam, it comes in my bedroom. I really feel sorry for the people at Headwaters condominiums. They are going to have everything, especially with the Bridge Stenders House, if that's lit up. So I really do caution. We all want to have this bridge, you know, $500,000 was budgeted for amenities. This will actually go over by, what, $80,000 over what was already budgeted, that you'll have to find money for it. So I caution you to be conservative with what you're doing here, and do take into consideration what the impact this will have on these residential homes. $88,000 is what the memo said. And then additionally, what's unfortunate is that the meeting where you had this was not televised. It was not recorded. So people who did want to watch and hear the conversation that you had were not able to do so. And I don't know, apparently signage is going on the big wall that's going to be created, and I'm curious as to what that signage and what font is going to be used, because our logos seem to keep morphing into something else. So please have consideration for the residential property owners. They have to live with this every day. It can be beautiful, but it cannot be glaring at them. So then, on to other things. First, I'd like to thank Jennifer Sassman and the Finance Department. They answered some questions I had this morning regarding the check register and delinquent payments. I thought I knew what it was, and they clarified it for me. I did want to talk about the televised meetings. Neither the public works, personnel, or administration meetings have been televised on air, and they're aired on Monday nights, and there's plenty of time after the council meeting is aired because it just goes to the Ashgosh media screen. So I think it's appropriate that those meetings also be televised. The important part of that is that what's discussed at those committee meetings is what you're voting on tonight. So that gives people the opportunity to know ahead of time and not just be thrown a curveball. In the packet, there was a memo regarding revaluation again, for someone that's gone through this year after year after year. I'm curious as to when commercial properties are going to be reevaluated. They keep going after residential, and I don't think commercial have been looked at for several years. So I'm curious about that. I do have questions regarding increasing the parking tickets. I'm all for it, but there were exceptions for handicap, boat lounge, and overnight parking, and I'm wondering, it's $5 increase. Why wouldn't you want to increase across the board $5? What were the exceptions, or is there some state statute that overrules that? The bridge lighting I wanted to talk about. I do have questions regarding the CSM on Plank Road and Third Street. It's long-term business. I go there at least once a week. I'm concerned that the CSM is based more on the business owners and their reputation in the community than basically zoning issue, because if this lot is split, as they're proposing, the smaller lot where a house is on will stay C1, which creates non-conformity to have residential property on a C1 district. And to leave it C1 is also a violation because it does not meet the minimum square footage of a commercial lot. Commercial lot has to be 9,500 square feet. This would be 8,789 square feet. Plus, the front setback is less than 40 feet. Minimum standard is 80 feet, or, I'm sorry, 60 feet, and that's for the front address, it's on Third Street. So there's a lot of questions I have here. I think that smaller lot should be changed to residential, even though it will be non-conforming in the sense that their front set, or their front footage will not be wide enough. If you leave it commercial, you're creating more of a non-conformity. The problem would be, is that splitting it, the larger property where the business is located, is going to be required, or should be required, to put in their 10-foot transitional buffer between the two. So there's a lot of hiccups in there. Apparently, back in 2006, when these lots were combined, the city should have followed up and made sure that that development occurred, or revoked that CSM, and that didn't happen. On to the TIF closure. TIF 9 is proposed to be closed. I strongly encourage that you listen to staff recommendation and not allocate those funds to the Strong Neighborhoods Program. The Strong Neighborhoods Program is a great project in concept. It's been horribly managed, to put it roughly. Additionally, according to the memo, that's 27 cents off the tax rate, if we were to actually put that toward reducing the tax rate, which would be a miracle, because I know you'll just spend it, but no more money to the Strong Neighborhoods Program, not until that gets straightened out. It's gotten too political and too messed up. There's too much favoritism. It's a shame, because some people really had some good projects go forward, and I'm glad that it worked for some of these residents, but there's too many problems with that project. Regarding the Bonta purchase, there's a proposal to purchase a parcel from the current owners over at the Bonta site, or Gilbert site, for $160,000, plus a little land swap where we'd get a parking lot or a vacant parking lot across the street, and they'd get another parcel. My concern is that, of course, they've owned this for years, decades, or over a decade. The city has paid them TIF increment all during that time to clean up the site. It's still an environmental site, and now we're going to go ahead and try to buy part of it back, which we will probably, most likely, as my husband said, sell it to somebody else for a dollar. And then, on top of it, give them more TIF money to build something. So it's been kind of a nasty spiral that we've been on in these projects. Granted, we all want to see something down there, but they're coming out ahead, especially with everything involved with it. And I'm just going to, with this bird thing, let's not be the first between Nina, Fox Crossing, and us. I can see so many problems because the draw is going to be the trails, the loop and the trestle trail. And I can see the end of Broad Street with 300 of these scooters sitting there, you know. Well, but then you add Nina and Fox Crossing, you know, and every, they tried to make it sound like a nice glowing project. There were a lot of complaints in Appleton by business owners where they were left in front of, you know, their downtown, left at the end of bridges. So don't get your hopes up too high. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Alderman Savinek?
Mayor, I'm just going to take each individually.
Go ahead.
So at this time, I'd like to receive minutes of the common council of 2, 21, 22.
Is there a second? So motion, a second, to approve the minutes from the common council of February 21st? Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Stan.
Kind of bending the rules here to speak right now. I'm using the common council minutes, but I want to address the people on Riverway. My first inkling would be to be involved, and I want you to know that a week ago, two weeks ago, Alderman Taylor contacted me, and we went through your neighborhood. I'm very familiar with it, because my best friend, Phil Herziger, lived on that street, and I can understand.
So why don't we put that under item number three, Stan?
Okay.
Because we have the opportunity to discuss that at that point.
All right. The reason I was trying to do it now, because I didn't want them to leave without me being able to address them, so.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll get through the next two items quickly.
Let me see here, a second.
Just the parking fines and the common council agenda. So we'll be to that in just a minute. Any other discussion on the actual minutes?
Sounds good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion for item two? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve increasing all regular parking violations as defined, from $10 to $15. Summer overnight parking from $10 to $15. The escalation system to $5 per violation for the same offense over a period of one year, and maxing out at $20, plus the fine for the fifth and subsequent violation as recommended by the administration committee.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
So motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Item three is the engineering construction for the bridge lighting. Do we have a motion, or did you want to discuss something first?
Mayor, I'm wondering if we could have a discussion first, because there might be some changes to this.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
I was hoping I would be able to discuss it first, seeing that's what I tried to do.
You could make your comments.
Haley, could we pull up those pictures? As Alderman Savinek said, him and I did go out a week ago and take a look at this, and I have some pictures for you to help better explain what's going to happen in your backyard. This is the west side of the bridge, looking east, at the end of Mill. Okay. And we can start with this one. Thank you. I think the purpose of the lighting is to show some ambiance downtown and to further enhance our area, and we see that Ashgosh has it in Manitowoc and Green Bay, and you see it on the nightly news or the nightly weather reports. And, but I think key issue is here, is how bright it's going to be. We're going to have to have the ability to have, to come down to the level that is suitable, I think, for all. And along with that, we're going to have to have a time. The bridge operates on Monday through Thursday at 10 o'clock, and Friday through Sunday at midnight. So I think if we would put the lighting according to that schedule, I think would fit us. Or we could even go a little earlier in the evening, too. But there's no sense enhancing our carbon footprint by having these lights shine all night long. So, another item is about lighting the columns on the bridge. I had heard that from someone. And if we look at the bridge here, it's, these columns here are kind of recessed back from the bridge, so I don't see any really reason to light these columns. But from the Bridge Stenders House to this point here where the land is, is 500 feet. So I would recommend that we would light this section to get the reflection on the water here. And on the other side, if we could go to the other photo. If we look at, here's the Bridge Stenders House, and here's the peninsula right here, and the first home is back another 100 some feet. So I think if we had a cutoff, this is looking west, and this is the east side of the bridge. This is taken from Appleton Street, and I think if we would cut off the lighting at this point here, that way there won't be any lighting through the neighborhood back here, and it would be kind of a counter to have the lighting back here, because you're not going to pick up much reflection. going to pick up much reflection. So I would recommend that we would cut it off here at about 450 feet and then just have this section here lit.
Am I able to comment on that?
And again?
No.
Pardon me?
Keep going.
That's our house. And I guarantee you, that sitting room that sits on that corner there sees everything.
I can't hear him.
You see everything regardless.
Pardon me?
So.
Well, there isn't any homes along this area here, so, you know, at first it was to light the bridge all the way through to the shoreline here on, towards the Lawson Canal. So this way, we would be quite a ways out and we would only be picking up the reflection here. And again, I think what's going to be the most important is the intensity of the light. And I think it would be to involve the neighbors on both sides about how bright that should be. And there should be a threshold and say, okay, that's what's working. And then again, I think there was a, we were going to have the bridge lit all night long and I think it's an opportunity here to shut off the lights, maybe after the 10 o'clock news or at 10 o'clock, or leave it with the hours. But I think that that should be done to lessen our carbon footprint. And then there should be another slide yet. And on the bridge tenders' house, I think if we light it up above here, you're going to, it's going to reflect into the bridge tenders', maybe obstruct or cause some glare on their windows. And if we did do the bridge tenders' house, I think it should be below their window here and lighting down if the council decided to go with that. Also, this is that parapet wall that the council's talking about having a sign welcoming people to Minasha. And again, that would be connected to the same lighting system and the intensity of that light would be regulated, too. And there's one more slide. This is the engineering map I got today from the Department of Transportation. And this is the bridge main street, the bridge tender operator's house. And then again, that length, the span, the first span where the drawbridge is, 171 feet. The next span where they're going to allow boats to go through, it's a little bit higher, that's 36 feet. The next span is 136 feet. And then another 157 feet to where the land is there. Of course, the peninsula comes out on this side further and that's where we would have that shorter length here and possibly to reduce any impact to the neighbors here. That's all I have to say. I'm sure there's other Aldermen that want to comment.
Alderman Sevigny, sorry about that.
Thank you. Thanks for sticking around. I guess it wasn't that long. First of all, I think what Alderman Taylor is trying to propose here is a compromise. I would beg the residents of Riverview to not be just anti-light completely. I think we need to beautify this area and in fact, I think it would increase the value of your properties. It is, in my opinion, something that would bring beauty to the city of Minasha and celebrate our new bridge in our community. We can celebrate it. These lights can be changed different colors. St. Patrick's Day is coming up. It could be Green Bay. We could have Packer Game Days, green and gold. We could support Ukraine with blue and yellow. We could do all these kinds of things. Valentine's Day, red. I have light in my backyard, too. I have streetlights that are extremely bright. I mean, it's, and I think we, well, just so you know, then Alderman Taylor and I, we went and we looked at it and he suggested this compromise and I guess I could live with that. Ms. Taylor, it brought up the cost. This would reduce the cost of doing this. There was an error, by the way, in the thing that you had read, Sandra, by $50,000, so that there was some question about engineering that was a mistake. So the additional cost is not what you had quoted. Also, to remember, this is a state project. This isn't a city project. These are just amenities that the city budgeted a year ago to enhance the beauty of the bridge. Instead of having just a big cement slab going over our community, we're doing things to make it a wonderful bridge. We're putting in beautiful rails. We upgraded the, what do you call it, the gatehouse or the? Bridge tenders' house. If you would have saw what that was going to look like. So we're trying to make this a nicer thing for Dode Island. For those of you who are not aware, your Dode Island sign was built by me. I was an original person that was on the Dode Island Development Council. I was one of the very first founding members. So I've always tried to make beautiful improvements, not just for Dode Island, but throughout our entire community. It's unfortunate that, and you heard earlier, Minasha was very lucky. We received a grant of over $2 million to clean up Water Street corridor. And ever since I was a little kid, that's always made Minasha look bad. I'm glad that we can make that improvement. What we lost, though, we had two applications. The other one was to improve the Lawson Canal. So I know someone had mentioned about concerns about the wildlife and that. Those would be addressed with what we hope to do with the Lawson Canal. The trees and that, we are a tree city. We plan to plant more trees and beautify that peninsula. Right now, of course, you can't do anything because it's really a staging area to do the bridge, but we're going to do a bang-up job and make it a showcase for our community. I did call our deputy director, Corey Gordon, and discuss these concerns and I don't know if any of the other council members had shared their opinions. And we will be looking at the possibility of not just having lights all the way across because to me, that would be light pollution. It doesn't, like Alderman Taylor said, it doesn't need to be done all the way across towards Anup Street, mostly to reflect in the water and to beautify the community. So I know it's not my neighborhood and I know how you can feel about the lights, but I really think in the long run, you will like it. You will actually be very proud of it. And I would again say, please try to be a part of the process and not be just against it completely. There is new technology than what the older bridges were, with their lighting had. You know, we're having updated LED-style lighting. It's designed in such a way that it doesn't reflect so much off. Your reflection is going to come from, more from the water than it will from the bridge itself. So thank you very much for coming this evening. I appreciate it and hopefully, we can work out something that the whole community will enjoy and I'll leave her at that if other council members have something to say.
I guess I did want to share with you guys that there is a precedent for the time of the lights being only a certain point during the day. Our decorative lighting downtown does turn off, I think, at 11:00, but we could pick whatever time seemed to make sense and have all those decorative lights go off at the same time. I think that is a good point and we did that downtown, knowing that there are houses nearby some of those lights. And I think really tonight, what we're asking for is to get the conduit in the concrete and we can keep working on the replacement of the lights, correct? And we're going to need conduit throughout the whole bridge, most likely, no matter where we choose to put the lights. So I think that gives us an opportunity to come back and talk with the neighbors and get some more input on how that will all work and do some landscaping as well. And those lights downtown also do have an intensity control, so we can turn them up and down to help with that glare and I would assume these would as well. Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of the issues that were brought up tonight are some of my concerns. The, I spoke with the mayor. I've been gone for a few weeks, so I was not involved with a lot of this, so what I had to do is look at all this on my phone. So everything looked a little small and I even had texted the mayor and said, I think you're getting a little gaudy with this bridge and a bit overpriced, too. I feel that it could be lit in sections and my main concern was the public that lives around the bridge. Now, we get pictures of the Reynitsky Bridge and the bridge in Oshkosh. Well, there are people living there. Those are just bridges across downtown areas with no one glaring in their homes and stuff. So I think there is a way that we can cut some of this cost down. And another thing is, we got to landscape all this yet. We have no money for that either. And we're going to put it all into lighting? I think we've got to look at this on a little better aesthetic value than just this broad base. And I don't really like the idea of lighting up halfway down a bridge where it's going to look like it burnt out, oh, the other half isn't lit. So we got to kind of figure out a way to meld these two concepts together and work with some soft lighting. And that's my comments. Thanks.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. This is confusing because we're talking about the lighting, but then we say, we back off and we say, well, we just want to install some conduit and we have to install a lot of conduit to get any kind of lighting, whether that's the full range of lighting or something small.
Do you want to have one of the directors comment on what we need to?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will have some questions. I'm just saying that it's hard to focus when we're not sure what exactly we're focusing We have concerns from residents and from the beginning of this process, when we think all the way back to 2013 or 15, when this bridge project first came to us, it was always the goal. The goal was always to minimize impacts to residents and their property. That was goal number one. And thus far, I think we've done that to the very best of our ability in working with the DOT and all of the stakeholders in this project. So I think we've done a great job at that and I hope that we work really hard to continue with that philosophy all the way through. I did take an opportunity to visit a backyard just to get a really good idea of where the bridge is in relation to their backyards and their houses. And if, when, I thought it was close with the old bridge and it's closer now. And I think we also need to remember that there will be more residents adjacent to the bridge on this side. And when you go out and stand at the edge there, that's still there, that round lookout point, the drawbridge is really close to them as well. So we need to be cognizant of the lighting all around for residents at both ends of the bridge. So that's concern number one. First and foremost is how the light will affect our residents. Concern number two, as Alderman Grady already stated, is the cost. We had 177,000 roughly left in our budget for bridge amenities. We came here two weeks ago and it was 245 and now it's up to 265. So things aren't moving in a very positive direction and as pointed out, we still have landscaping to take care of on the downside, on both sides of the bridge, quite frankly. And there has been some discussion about light intensity. Director Youngworth, you and I had a conversation about several items today and one of them being light intensity. With the controller that has been presented to us, the board to control the lighting, would we have the ability to dim these lights as has been talked about here this evening?
I would imagine yes. There's going to be that ability to adjust those lights. You have the full range of colors and things of that nature, so I don't specifically know the specific controller, but that's part of the overall design. What we're looking for here is we presented the concepts the last two or three meetings. We've presented the concepts that what do we want to light? We talked about lighting the columns. We talked about lighting the girders. We talked about individual dot lights across or along the girders and we presented the prices for all of that different stuff. My understanding, what the council directed us to do was come back with the final cost to light the girders and also asked for some with the bridge tenders' house and the retaining wall next to the bridge tenders' house. That's what's presented here in this proposal. The difference between 245 and 265 is the cost of the engineering to this point. That's why we incorporated that. That's why that did change.
And the operator's house as well.
And the operator's house.
And the operator's house as well, so that's why that cost is up there.
Yeah, so.
So that's, to answer your question about the change, that's because we made sure we were showing you the dollars that this was truly costing. You know, back in September, we asked, is this a direction that we want to go? And we were given the yes, we want to go with bridge lights. So then we came back and we said, it's going to cost this much to design the concept and we were given the yes. And now we're at the point that we have the concept, we're trying to nail the concept down so we know where to put the conduit. And that's what we're trying to decide right now. The actual fixtures and the colors and the controllers and all of that stuff, that's coming yet.
But if we change the scope of the lighting, right? So what was presented was lighting the whole bridge.
I believe.
So if we change the scope of that, would that also decrease the price?
I believe the last meeting, I indicated that we were aware that we weren't looking to necessarily light the peninsula back. We were aware of the houses. We've talked in the past, based on comments from Alderman Sevigny, Alderman Taylor, in the past, there was discussion about light trespassing and the intensity and things of that nature. And that's part of our proposal. We can't give you photometrics when we don't have an exact light.
Yeah, but my question was, if we change the scope of the project, right? If we just say we want to go with the drawbridge portion, then would that affect the amount of conduit that's needed and thereby decrease the price?
Possibly if there's available space in the submarine cable and that I don't know.
And then?
The intent would be to run conduit the length of the bridge on both sides because you have to bring power from one end to the other end. So we would, no matter what we do, is my understanding that we are going to have to bring conduit on both sides of the bridge, the length of the bridge. At that point, if we're going to stick with lighting the girders, okay, that was the cheapest option that we were presented, was strictly and only lighting the girders, not the dot lights, not the column lights, none of that, the girders. We would still need that conduit to run that whole length. And then we can play with, okay, does that, that lighting start at point A? Does it start at point B? Does it start at point B? Does it start at point C?
Okay, and I'm going to back up to my question about the controller and the ability to control the intensity of the lights. Does the controller have a dimmer switch, is the question? And, that's something...
I don't know that, but that's something that we're going to, we're not designing that controller right now. That's one thing that we have to take back to the consultant and say, "We want this ability to dim these lights." So I can't tell you that specific controller, no.
The city attorney said that they did comment on that at the last meeting, that there was a dimmer within the controller that they were recommending, so.
Okay.
I didn't remember that either.
I don't recall that being asked. However, I can say that I've received conflicting information on that. And so, that is something that desperately would need to be confirmed and figured out if the project were to move forward. Based on the things that we've heard this evening, if the council moved forward simply with approving the installation of the electrical conduit tonight, which I'm guessing is the intent here, okay, then...
Correct.
That's what I'm understanding. Then what would the next steps be? As far as planning the actual lighting of the bridge and garnering input from the common council and residents?
Well, they're going to finish their design, if that's the direction we go, they're going to finish their design, work with the consultant, or not the consultant, the contractor to install the conduit, get the approvals from the DOT and everything for that. Once they have that, they have a general idea based on just lighting the girders, where they have to bring junction boxes and run conduit. So they can get the price and they can do that. Then we would start to work with the different lighting vendors as far as, is it, I don't even know a name brand. Is it name brand A, or name brand B, or is it name brand C? You know, and then I'm sure there's a couple different controllers potentially, maybe there's not, but we would look at that different stuff. You know, what I've been hearing so far is, we want color, we want the ability to dim it, and we want to be conscious of, you know, what were the light pollution. You know, and again, we're back to the photometrics. This is something that we've talked about since we've brought this up, because it's been mentioned, that, you know, but until we actually physically have a light and have that stuff, I can't tell you what the photometrics is going to be. And if the photometrics are too bright, then we have to pick a different light, or we have to pick a different controller to be able to dim that at that point. We're not at that point. We're at the point, right now, if you don't want to spend any more money, but at some point in the future, you want to be able to light this bridge, now is where you're making that decision, because the conduit going in and that stuff, it's going to be there and it can be used in the future.
So what's the timeframe?
For what?
When the conduit would be, from when the conduit's installed to when an actual lighting plan is established?
Sometime in the next couple months, I'm guessing. I don't know what it takes necessarily on the consultant's end to put that together.
Okay.
Because we're still finalizing the design on the actual conduit runs.
And there won't be any, will there be lights installed before the photometric studies are completed?
No, because we have to come back to you with the options. So this is a, we're telling you, this is where we think it's going to cost us. There's probably going to be some wiggle room in the actual fixtures that we end up buying. You know, this is the estimate that the consultant is giving us and saying, "Worst-case scenario, this is where we're thinking you're going to be with this style of light. Could we go with a lesser light? Could we go with a, you know..." I'm guessing we're probably a little bit more on the higher end of the light when it comes to cost.
So, the recommendation, I just want to be really clear on what were, the recommendation for this evening would be to go ahead with the engineering plan for the conduit installation, right?
Installation.
And then, excuse me?
And installation.
And installation of the conduit, but has nothing to do with lighting at this point?
Other than the fact that you are choosing to light the girders from the columns?
Yes, but as far as how far the light will reach and where the lights will be installed...
None of that is on the table today.
Okay.
Where, what specific columns or piers they're located at, you know, what you're choosing is to move forward with lighting the girders with the spotlights or the floodlights from the columns and the piers. That's what you're choosing. If you choose that, then we'll move forward with the design and start laying the conduit out, designing the conduit runs, get the proper approvals that we need, and then start selecting the different types of lights or types of fixtures that we can present to you.
And then, will, you'll present options for those...
Correct.
Lighting things?
We're not picking any fixtures right now, other than the fact that it's what's available for lighting that type of a floodlight.
Okay, and looking into whether or not the controller has the dimming ability?
We haven't even chosen the controller yet, but it's my understanding, based on attorney captains, that they had mentioned that.
Okay, and again, I don't recall that. All right, well, so, in my opinion, I mean, I feel like we can install conduit if we feel that's necessary. And I hope that perhaps we can get some sort of working group together, like we did for the other amenities, to come, to come forward with some recommendations for lighting that is responsive to the needs of the community and the residents in those areas.
Alderman Grotty?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. We're not looking at any of the lighting, option one, option two, option three. What is just the cost, Corey, for the conduit run? What are we looking for, a dollar amount, needed to make the motion to get this going?
I don't believe it was broke out that way.
Do we have an idea?
There's a dollar amount in the motion based on the fact that this is what they're seeing, lighting the girders with the controller and the conduit. That's the overall dollar amount. I don't know the specific dollar amount for the conduit. Without, it might be in here?
I think each one has a base estimate, and I think that would be conduit. Well, we got to figure that out then, before we go on with this. But, to your point, yes, we have to get the ability to be able to light from one end to the other, whether we do it or not, so we have to get that stuff done. And I thought it was like a $50,000 base infrastructure that he said. And then we can go back and look at, which...
I think it was more than that.
Was it?
I believe it is...
135, it looks like. Correct, the baseline infrastructure?
Is this what it is? Page 69.
That's what...
Each one has a baseline. Just to do the bridge would be 50. So each one has a different set.
Right. That's drawbridge only, though.
Right. I'm just saying each one has a, but to go all across it would be much harder.
That one.
Well, we got to know what it is. We're looking a little foolish up here.
The baseline infrastructure on the proposal that was given to us at the last meeting, do you have that up, Corey?
I thought it was 135, too.
On alternative number two, which is to light the girder lighting with floods and the city sign, was 135.
The issue with this updated proposal is that each item does have the conduit broken out separately, so we would have to dig through each piece that you provided and pull that information out, which we can certainly do. But yes, Mayor is correct in that the last Board of Public Works meeting was $135 for the base infrastructure, and that included engineering and basically anything to get it in beyond the lighting. So the lighting would be a separate piece, but the base infrastructure, including engineering, was 135.
Well, then, how come alternate one, the drawbridge only, the total cost is 115,000?
Because you're not running the baseline all the way across the bridge.
Not dumb answer.
What page are you looking at? Alternate one?
84.
Can you go to page 62?
Page 84?
No, go to page 62, please.
Oh.
Is that on this agenda, too?
62.
So, page 62 is the actual memo?
Yep.
All right. In the top column there, you have the Racine Street Bridge Lighting Alternatives Initial Estimates. That is the estimate that he gave us during the presentation. So you have alternate one, which is just the drawbridge. You have alternate two, which is the girders and the operator house. You have alternate three, which is the full build-out. We're talking about alternate two. So if you go down to the next column, they give you the options of a low wattage and a standard wattage. The low wattage is significantly more expensive.
Gotcha.
So the second chart or whatever below is only alternate two, but one is low wattage for 368, 369,000. And then, the standard wattage is 287, 948. Now, that includes the engineering concept, design, and things of that nature. So if you go back up to the upper column or table, you have base infrastructure and controls, you're looking at roughly 135,000 for the base infrastructure. The lights would be another 130,000.
130, right, gotcha. Okay. All right, thank you. It's clear as mud. Okay.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a meeting today with the state of Wisconsin engineer on the project, and he had said by April 1st, we need to know where to put the conduit. Tomorrow, the rest of the girders are going to be delivered. You can see they have that red slide out there, and they call it a girder launcher. So if you're referring to it, it's a girder launcher. And that's going to take place tomorrow and Wednesday for the final girders to be put in. I asked him if the bridge is closer to your house than what it was. The only part that's closer to the homes on Riverway is on the peninsula. It's only a few feet, but it's closer. Over the Lawson Canal and where it sets down on Hannup Street, he said it is not. I want you to know from the beginning, Alderman Nichols, my sister-in-law in the back, who lives on Broad Street across from you, their concern were these lights. Far before we got into this, and as of our meeting last week, the full 800 feet of the span was going to be lit. All through your backyards, right up behind your houses there. And, like I said, Alderman Sevigny and I took a ride, we went under the bridge, we looked at where your houses were, where the bridge was, and where that light would be trespassing on your property. We went north, we went east and west of the bridge on both sides to look at it, and let's say we just lit the drawbridge, okay? Then, somebody said that it might look like you're only lighting half the bridge. Well, we could do that, too, but thought the compromise from the 800 feet was to reduce it on your side of the bridge by 450 feet. So we cut it in half, and when somebody's looking at the river, up the river, I think they're going to be looking at the reflection of the bridge on the water. I think that's the whole purpose of this, is to get that. So by going past the point, which is about 200-some feet to the nearest houses, nearest house at 536 Riverway, that's still pretty far back, and you're going to have the buffer of the land and some of the trees that are left and some of the new planting, but you won't have that, you won't have that direct impact that the 450 feet were eliminating in your backyard. And on the west side, we would be eliminating 300 feet of lighting over the land. So when you're looking at the bridge in any position, you're seeing the reflection on the water and not on the land. And, our consultant, last meeting, told us, "This is a very long bridge." Alderman Sevigny said that multiple times. "This is an extremely long bridge." Well, of course, he's selling lighting, and he was selling us 800 feet of lighting. So, we can cut this in half tonight, stay out of your backyard. Sir, I'll let the mayor ask you to speak after I'm done, if you would like, but that's what the public forum was from. So, now it's, the council gets to speak, but I'll let the mayor, he's running the meeting, so I'll see if he'll let you speak. We are here, we are here for you, and we want to make this be as sensitive as we can to you. The number one control is the intensity on those lights, like a dimmer control in your dining room or wherever. And another one is, before, there was no control, they would have been on dusk to dawn, probably. Let's see if we can put that time in for you. We will look for your input on that, what time it needs to be lit, and I think it should be the intensity, the neighbor should vote on, "Okay, that's pretty good." You know, if you go past St. Mary's McDonald, the electronic signs, they're not bad. You go out on Highway 47 by Michael's Restaurant, you need sunglasses at midnight going by that. So, there is a big control with the intensity, and that's what's really going to determine this, how light the, how bright that should be. Now, if it was up to me, we wouldn't even have this. I asked for a referendum on this bridge, and it was vetoed, okay? Otherwise, we wouldn't be here today. I thought the bridge would last another 35 years, as it was built to be, but we're past that. And, I just wanted to let you know that we are very, very sensitive to, because this is right in your backyards. And that's why we'd eliminate that lighting completely tonight by 450 feet on your side over half of the bridge length. So, I will yield to the mayor, and thank you.
Is there other discussion? So, sir, we can't have the public commenting tonight, but I think what we do need to do is get the conduit in, and then have a group of you get together with us to start talking about some of those lighting options, before we start picking fixtures and deciding where everything goes.
Just one comment. You know, I understand we had that opportunity to speak, but there's been some things that have been said here that are just not accurate.
True. Yeah. So...
I'll wait.
Okay.
Give him an agenda.
I have one. I didn't think it was...
Yeah, it starts the area.
And, thank you, Mayor. With no further members of the council here, I will make a motion to proceed with engineering and construction, bidding to light the girders, operator house, and city sign with standard wattage. Now, Mayor, if you would like, we can leave the dollar amount out at this point, it seemed like we weren't real clear on it, and, but we have to vote to get this conduit in at this meeting tonight. And, but we have to vote to get this conduit in at this meeting tonight.
Please see his motion. I think your motion goes beyond what you really want to do. So... Okay, so, so it probably makes sense to make the motion to proceed with the engineering and installation of the conduit to light the Racine Street Bridge.
Okay. I think also germane to this, Mayor, is because we don't put in all this extra conduit, by the reduction of the 800 feet down to what Alderman Sevenak and I and what I showed you tonight. So I think that's germane to the motion, because we're going to put in otherwise 750 feet of conduit that we won't even need.
I believe we have to run it from the shore on both sides to the center.
I don't know where that comes in, there's different points of that, Corey?
We would look to run it the full length of both sides, the conduit, because you have to bring the power from the shore. So if we're bringing the power...
It's coming from both shores, Paul.
Yes, correct. The bridge tender house, that's shore right there, so that's really not coming very far. The other direction, it's my understanding that we have to, we have to bring the power from shore. And I don't know what we would have to do to the size of conduit. I'm assuming you want to run each individual side, not try to come all partway with a conduit and then try to split and try to get underneath the bridge to, say, the east side of the bridge, and then start continuing down the east side or continuing down both sides. I would recommend that you do both sides. If I hear differently, we can... We're aware that we don't want to have the light on the houses and things of that nature. You know, and we'll minimize what we can in that area for the conduit, you know, but still leaving the options open for the council to decide, we're starting here, we're stopping there.
So to restate the motion, Mayor, and to eliminate part of that was proceeding with the engineering and the conduit.
And construction of the conduit for, to light the girders, the bridge tower, tender tower, and the sign.
To light the bridge tower, the girders, and the city sign.
Yes.
With the standard wattage.
Sure, you want to include that? That's, that would be a germane motion? Is there a second? It's a motion and a second by Alderman Schmidt. Any other discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm listening tonight, and after all of that discussion, I guess I still don't know. I can't determine what the purpose is of lighting the bridge at this point. As I was driving here today, I looked out on Garfield Street, crossing the Washington Street Bridge, and I probably didn't look soon enough, but I'm not sure how much of the Racine Street Bridge we'll actually see when crossing that bridge. When I cross the Takeo Street Bridge, I can't see it at all. Because of the angle and, because of the angle of the bridge, you can't see it at all. If I'm driving through the downtown, heading east, I'm not going to see the lights on the bridge. And even if I'm coming down Racine Street, heading south towards Racine Street, or towards the bridge, as a driver, I'm not sure that I'm going to see that light display either because of the angle of the bridge. I'd be very curious if I can see that angle. So my question is, at this point, who are we designing this for? Why are we lighting the bridge? For boaters? I guess, and I don't know that, that's a, I'm not convinced that that is the right investment for us to be doing. And there's a communication problem here. We all came here tonight believing that we were voting on a lighting display for the bridge, only to find out that what's being asked is to move forward with some conduit. So we, we need to be more clear on our processes and what's being expected of the council and be, so that we can be more transparent to our residents.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries six, one.
Item four is the automatic aid agreement. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenak?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for the council to accept the mutual aid agreement between the Appleton Fire Department and the Nina Menasha Fire Rescue.
It's a motion and a second, is there discussion? Should have left your late onset. Anyhow.
So just really quickly, the change here basically is, is that we don't have in Nina Menasha an ambulance service that Appleton now does. And so that's the only change in the, basically, the intermunicipal agreement.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries seven, zero.
Have a motion for item five? Alderman Sevenak?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to accept repairing Engine 31 Tank Four system for the cost not to exceed $16,517, with funding coming from the maintenance of motor vehicle budget that is within the operating budget.
It's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, can you explain the TAK IV system, or T-A-K IV system?
Sorry, you have the Alderman.
Got it, thanks, Mayor. The TAK IV system is an independent front suspension on the fire apparatus. And this is the last vehicle that has this system. And back in early 2000s, when it was created or developed, all the trucks that we purchased had this on there, and we have totally gone away from having this system on there. It was made for, more for military vehicles and riding through rough terrain. And so it does give a little extra comfort to the passengers, the drivers in the cab. But going back to the apparatus that does not have that, there really doesn't seem to be a whole lot of difference with how the drivers or the passengers are in the car or in the truck with how they, you know, how they ride. So we've kind of gotten away from this type of system.
And apparently it rusts out, too.
And they rust out, yes.
And I noticed in your meeting or minutes, our new truck that we just ordered, we didn't order the system in it, and I really, really appreciate that, that we learned from the past and that, I'm surprised Pierce is still offering it, but...
Yeah, we've totally gone away.
Thanks for being proactive with that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries seven, zero.
Do we have a motion for item six? It's a motion by Alderman Schmidt to approve the certified survey map for 811 Plank Road and a second by Alderman Grady. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, Mrs. DeBaal-Taylor had some questions about the non-conforming issues. Could, and I saw you jotting some things down, could you address those?
Yeah, it feels like yesterday. No, just kidding. Yes, so, let me just find my notes here. So yes, the CSM splitting the lot. So basically, when this, when this was done, as noted in the memo, in 2006, the thought process was combining the properties to tear down the house and build an expansion. That never happened. The family is looking at cleaning this property back up. They have no intention to tear down the house. It is a livable unit, and I believe they potentially could then sell it in the future as a separate entity. There's a lot of discussions of nonconformity that were brought forward at the start of this meeting. A lot of the existing setbacks and things of that nature. You know, the front setback of the house or the eastern setback of the house. Those are existing, legal nonconformities is what they call it. So there is a difference between illegal and legal nonconformities. So basically, legal nonconformities means it doesn't meet today's standards, but it is legal because it is, has been, and is existing. Another point to point out is that within the C1 zoning district, residential, single-family residential is permitted within that district. It actually wasn't until two years ago that we modified that to require that they also need a special use permit. So again, because this use, being residential within a C1, was there prior to that ordinance, it is legal nonconformity. So even though it's nonconformity, it is legal nonconformity. So today, let's say they would want to rebuild a house or put a large addition on that house, that would trigger then a special use permit to consider that because of moving that beyond its legal nonconformity status. In terms of the setbacks and other things of that nature, again, within the C1 district, there is a clause there that says if residential use is the principal use within this zoning classification, the residential standards then fall into place. So again, that is what we had looked at with this, with this lot split. And again, being that there is two existing principal structures in two different uses on one site right now, this would technically also be cleaning up another nonconformity, having them be on separate sites. I think there was one question regarding the zoning, forcing, with a certified survey map to require that to be zoned, single-family residential. I would have to defer to the city attorney. The county council always has the ability to enact a, I forget the terminology now, basically a proactive zoning, to basically state, you know, we're going to go out and we're going to actually rezone the property to a more, a classification that fits the comprehensive plan or the land use on that. But again, I don't think we can require it as a condition of the certified survey map that this property be rezoned. But again, I would leave that up to the city attorney, because it is legal nonconformity. It is not an illegal nonconformity.
Thank you for that explanation.
Alderman Sevenak?
Sam, I wish you would have provided a better map. I just zoomed in at 300%.
Go down a little further, there's, on the next page is the action, keep going.
Oh.
I get to zoom back smaller, though.
Well, that one, I kind of see...
There it is.
See here. So, so when I zoomed in 300% on the other one, there's like a V-shaped thing in there, which isn't on this other map, is my concern. And so anyways, I'm a little confused. Is this so that they can build so that they have the three-foot setback or something?
Nope, all this is doing is creating two separate lots for a business and a house. So currently, they could not sell the house or change ownership.
I read it the other way around.
If they couldn't do that.
Then I have no further questions. Sorry. I really thought it was going the other way. Because if you're going to expand, you want to expand into a lot. Okay, that's what got me confused in the whole memo.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, then, if we could have a roll call vote?
Motion carries seven, zero.
Item I is action items. Do we have a motion for item one? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of February 18th through March 3rd, 2022, in the amount of $3,449,780.66.
So motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries seven, zero.
Item two is regarding Tiff District Number Nine closure. Alderman Nichols?
I'll move to follow staff's recommendation to proceed with the closure of Tid 9 prior to April 16th, 2022, as the full amount of the increment would be placed on the 2022 tax roll.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries seven, zero.
Item three is the acquisition of real estate. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the acquisition of real estate by the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Menasha for portions of the former Gilbert Paper Mill as presented for the agreed-upon price of $160,000.
So motion and a second, is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we look back at the Gilbert property and the factory, I think, closed between, I think it's 18 years ago. So in that time, the city has done a shoreline restoration. We put in a trail in that area, and also we did a pond restoration. I don't think the owners of this property has, they should be giving us this property for a dollar because what sits on top of that is where the turbines were for the Gilbert Paper Company. And that is some heavy, thick concrete throughout that area there. And I don't see any cost here on what the restoration is going to be to remove that very thick concrete above the Lawson Canal. So this is like phase one getting into this. And I mean, look what we've done, shoreline restoration, trail, pond, and what have they done? And then they want to sell this to us at this high of a cost, so now we clean up more of their property? It just, it kind of doesn't end with this Lawson Canal property. And I don't have the numbers here to look forward to see what it's going to cost to open that up. And...
So Alderman Taylor, this isn't the property where the power canal runs through it? It's the property to the, which way is that, what, east?
According to the map, though, it shows where the canal comes through there.
So if you look at your map, parcel A is the one that we're talking about, which the, you can see the roof of the turbine area just slightly to the left of it. Is that what you were going to say, Director Schrader? Okay. Does that help?
So the turbines are adjacent to that property?
Yes.
And at that point...
We have an agreement to acquire that property, I believe, for, it says $1,000, it's a...
They're not even going to give it to us for a buck?
$1,500, $3,500. But that is part of a different agreement, only if we start construction of the Lawson Canal. We have the option of purchasing it.
And what would it cost to remove that concrete adjacent to this property?
I don't know what that would be at this point.
I still, all the work this community's done, and they want development back there. I'm going to vote against it tonight, because we have done so much and so... much and so, uh, I can't imagine, 700,000? Probably have into that project?
I, I'm not sure what the total dollar amount is now.
Yeah. So they should be thankful that, that we're, we've been a great partner for them and they, and they have, they have not. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear what parcel it was. That's, that's my only comment. I'm not speaking for or against the project. Alderman Savick?
Thank you, Mayor. I was, um, wondering, maybe Alderman Nichols can help me with this one. There was a, a comment made about swapping some property for a vacant lot across the street. Can you touch on that? Or Sam?
Yeah, I can certainly touch on that. Um, so page 143 at the end of that, uh, land purchase agreement, um, touches on those properties of discussion. Uh, so originally the, the Redevelopment Authority was interested in acquiring, uh, parcel A, um, from the, the Gilbert property. Uh, basically, uh, they felt they could spur development quicker, um, as well as have a more conforming end development and end product, as well as make sure the city has a hand in, in seeing a high-quality development throughout this property. Um, so again, having that ability to do that from the, from the start, um, is kind of where they were looking at, at going with that. Uh, the parcel identified as B is some remnant, uh, Bonta property from, uh, from the sale of the, the Bonta, the remaining portion of the Bonta building to that developer. Um, because that is such a small piece of property, uh, we had discussed with the property owners about, um, basically as part of this, this transfer to reduce the cost of the acquisition to, um, get that part of their development. So once that comes time to develop, um, that property owner or that developer only has to work with one property owner to get that developed versus working with the Redevelopment Authority as well as working with, um, a private, uh, private ownership. Uh, throughout those conversations, the discussion was brought up about the parking lot to the south, um, that it's kind of, uh, it's, uh, land that's, that's not necessarily used by the owner currently. Um, so we had looked at, um, is there an interest to own it? Um, you know, we have the, the parking lot two blocks to the north, um, on the south side of Anup Street, uh, that is vacant. Uh, we have had discussions about, you know, townhouse-style development in that area, um, as well as kind of the just general condition of some of the houses as you go down, um, Anup Street. So in the consideration of, of the, the project as well as the future, um, the RDA did consider, you know, owning that piece of property could be beneficial to, um, to the City of Manasha in a long-run situation, um, for the redevelopment of the entire corridor. Um, so that's what we had looked at there. If you could see within...
My question is, is it, is it for A, B, and C?
The acquisition is to purchase A.
Okay.
B would be transferred to the ownership group, to PJC Group, and C would be transferred to the RDA. So at the end of this, A and C are RDA property.
That was my question. Well, you should've stopped me sooner.
Well, I thought maybe we'd get something good out of it. All good. All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Alderman Taylor?
One other thing, the, the owner of this property, when we had him with the, the workshop and talking about development, we really have to, because the Bonta building's coming along so well, we really have to address across the river. And that developer told us that that has been, uh, people coming through, looking at that. Uh, we need to, I mean, it looks like the buildings we're seeing this week in Ukraine, I mean, it looks almost bombed out.
And again, if we look at the, the TIF project plan that we just approved this past fall, that there's dollars in there to look at that, there's dollars budgeted, there's conversations being had, but what we're talking about right now is the acquisition of this property.
Oh, I, 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 I agree with that, but we need to move forward with across the river because these people are gonna be buying condos very soon. And Alderman Savick and I on our drive looked at that. And even if we just, uh, did a nice job putting some windows in or fake windows in and securing that, that would help a lot. Thank you.
Sam, could you say the A, B, and C again for me?
Certainly. So acquire A. Um, C would come to the RDA and B would be transferred to PJC Group. So B would be part of that larger development than the remaining portion.
So maybe, who has B now?
The RDA has B.
So basically they're trading B for C?
I don't like that.
But from, so from B, the parking lot to the north of B, as well as through the building to the future Oak Street, that is all privately owned now. Um, I think it's, was it Bonta One LLC or something, the, the development company there. So again, being such a small piece of property, um, and working with developers, working to acquire a piece of property where there's only one ownership versus two ownership is gonna be beneficial to the city in the long run.
Um, I think it's more beneficial that we have B for the community than for PG to have it. Because of the property that's being developed now and, and any future prop developments, I see, uh, more interest in property B than C at any point. Um, I think B is a key, key piece of property, especially if we're paying 160,000 for A.
B's really, I mean, I read the discussions in, in the RDA, but... It, it's really a remnant piece of property. It's not, that property isn't gonna get developed on its own, is the thing. It's gonna be part of a larger development site.
I don't, I don't like the B part. I don't think the RDA should give up B. I think we should still retain that and A and C would be, uh, the options, but that's not what your committee decided to do. And I'm not gonna hold up anything, but I really think that that was, um, yeah. Mark my word and please put, put it in the minutes that I, I didn't like the idea of us handing over, uh, that lot B on Anup Street because I think we're gonna be sorry later in the future.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries six one.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. Do we have a motion for resolution three?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve R322, a resolution approving continuing appropriations. And this is having to do with the 2021 fund balance reservations.
Is there, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Alderman Taylor, did you try to vote or? Okay. I, I can't see if it just wasn't...
Motion carries seven zero.
Item L is appointments. Uh, being that I was out of town last week, I did not catch that Mr. Ellis, his term is up, so you don't really have to accept the resignation, but it is on there. So if you want to, you, you're welcome to do that as well. Alderman Taylor?
Pass to Alderman Savick.
Okay. Alderman Savick?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll accept, uh, Ryan's resignation and, uh, approve your appointment of Susan on the Board of Appeals for a term of 3/7/22 to 2/1/25.
Is there's, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item N, thank you for sticking around. And I think that the microphone up there, the battery may have died. So if someone wants to give you a different microphone, otherwise we won't be able to hear you on the tape later on, so.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Um, I would encourage you to Google our address, 536 Riverway. I have John Jones for the notes again. Um, and see the line of sight, but on that bridge, especially , you know, as you look towards the end where the, I wanna say guardhouse, that's not what it is, but, yes, where the bridge operator sits. You'll see that there's a clear line of sight there, especially in that bedroom that's there, uh, on that corner of that house. Um, the pictures that were shown were really distorted because they're shown from a couple hundred yards away, maybe a quarter mile away. This is in my backyard. I'd asked for you to look at it from that perspective. And, um, when looking at it, you know, it seems like this discussion is not necessarily one to bring in new opinions, in my opinion. As I saw Mr. Taylor when he was doing his presentation, it's, it's work with us because this is going forward. Well, that's a presumptive close that it's already been approved. I, I would like to be able to come to these kind of council meetings and have our opinions heard and really taken into consideration. And I don't necessarily feel like it's happening. I think the compromise, to go back to Ms. Nichols', uh, point, who is gonna benefit from these lights? If it's the boating community, anybody that's going that far, that direction in the boating is going over there to dock their boat or to get gas. That's the only reason they go through that bridge to begin with. There's nothing else over there unless we're opening up the Manasha Lock. Um, that's, those are the only folks that are going over there. So I think a good compromise might be one to just light it on that side of the bridge. Cause if we were to light it on that side of the bridge, anybody who would see it from the other side coming to the bridge would ultimately see it on the other side. Um, I am, I am very nervous about what this is gonna look and feel like. We talked about the dimmer switch. Well, who gets to set that? Is it me? You know, cause I, I'll, I'll set it. Well, it, it's not. It'll be another discussion and then, you know, you'll talk, what's frustrating in this kind of a situation is that people that are a mile away have the same influence on this group as somebody who's sitting right there. Our, our house is our home. It's an investment. As I said earlier, I've moved 11 times in the last 28 years, cross-country moves. Every home's an investment for me. Every home's one that I want to be able to walk away with, at least getting out what I'm putting in. And then I know Mr., ooh, Savinch?
Savick.
Seven Nick. Sorry, my apologies. Uh, uh, had stated that this may add value. It'll add beauty. And I, I, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, I guess. Um, I don't think it's gonna add the beauty that I would wanna have in my backyard every night, all the time. And I apologize for not following the procedures correctly. I misread the agenda. I did see this open comments at the end, but I thought we were rearranging it. I didn't see on the prior page that we were actually doing the comments up there. Like I said, this is my very first meeting. Never had a reason to come, uh, to any, in any of the places we've lived. But I see this as just cause for, for us to come and, and discuss and, and bring our concerns together as a local community, especially those that are right there on Riverway. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Is there anyone else? Paul?
Can't miss an opportunity. Mr. Jones did a great job, I think, representing us on, on Riverway, but I, just a, just a couple of comments, I think, maybe to, maybe to build on. First of all, um, I appreciate the willingness to discuss changes. Okay? So that is, that goes a long way for me. Compromise is, I'm all for compromise. Uh, I'm an engineer, right? My, my job is all about compromise, trade-off, understanding risks and making decisions. Okay? So I appreciate that you take into consideration the trade-offs that come for all, all parties involved. And I think it's important to look at the advantages or disadvantages that come with this. And I think, you know, the, the, the question is, what are the advantages of lighting that side of the bridge? I, I, that's a, that's a great question. And, and thank you, Ms. Nichols, for bringing that up because that, that is important. Cause I know what the disadvantages are. Okay? I could tell you. And, and I would appreciate if, I think, you know, somebody earlier mentioned, come and take a look at it from, from our backyards. Perspective matters. Okay? Not just perspective in terms of the angle of how you're looking at it, but the perspective of, from our perspective, right? In terms of what it, what that impact is gonna have to us from our property value, from a quality of life perspective. I mean, this is, this, this, this is, this is very meaningful. Uh, you know, you mentioned that you have lights in your back, you have streetlights in your backyard. Now imagine those, yeah. Now imagine those streetlights that are 35 feet above ground rather than 15 feet. Okay? And now take those streetlights and amplify them and add all these colors that you talked about in the Las Vegas Light Show. You want that in your backyard? I don't.
You're gonna get streetlights down the bridge.
Understand, exactly, exactly. Right? So, so as you, as you add and amplify all of this, what does that do for us? Okay? Lot of negatives, lot of trade-offs for us, not a lot of positives for the community because it's, the community's not seeing it. Okay? Please, please, come and take a look. I mean, I'm sure the Joneses, we absolutely would love to have you over for you to have this perspective. The comment was made, it's a few feet closer. I'll, gotta bite my tongue on that. It's not a few feet closer, right? The, again, perspective. Okay? Take a look at that overhead view from a map perspective and you'll see how much closer this is. Not to mention the fact that once all this, once all these trees have been blown away out there, wow, it is right on top of us all of a sudden. We had a beautiful, almost nature preserve area there. It's gone. Okay? Please don't damage it more for us. That's what we're asking. Willing to compromise, absolutely understand. For us, the aesthetic value is more important than probably anybody cause that can make or break our quality of life and the value of our properties. You can take an approach that is a minimal approach, that still can add light, add some, add some, some, I'll say aesthetic value, but not be this gaudy, multi-color type things that are, that are, that are going to, that add no value for us. Okay? Take a look at the view of the direction, the light direction towards our property versus those Oshkosh bridges that were in the pictures. Right? Those bridges face out on the water, no properties. This bridge faces at us, all of us. Okay? I think that's the majority of my comments.
What was, what was your address?
Uh, I'm sorry. Paul Weber, 532 Riverway. And, and yes, please come, come visit. We would, would love to have you and, and show you really what this is. Cause the perspective does matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
We could do barbecue if that helps.
Yes.
Trust me, I've been in most of your homes.
I bet, I bet.
And I know where you're going. Mr. Jones, I've been in your homes several times.
Yeah, but have you been in that second floor bedroom? That's where this?
Yes, I have. Yes, I delivered a...
Okay. Very good. Well, anyway, I'm Stephanie Jones at 536 Riverway. My, my one point is...
Could you just come a little closer to the microphone?
My one point is the amount of erosion that's taking place where the trees had already started to come out. The Rockway on the Bonta Peninsula was crumbling into the water. Well, now we've taken all of that tree line that's at the river, river line, it's gone. So as these rains come on and the snows come in, those rocks are gonna continue to crumble into the, into the water there. It's also a safety concern. I know no one's supposed to be on the peninsula right now and in the winter they're not, but in the fall they were. Children, come on. There is now a steep, basically slide down into the river, um, since those trees are gone. There's no railing, there's, the rocks are mishappen and several places gone. So I know we can't do much with the landscaping until the bridge is done, but it is a safety concern. And, you know, for our waterways, just all that sediment and junk going into the river.
We have 1.5 million dollars in the core of engineers to do the rest, uh, shoreline restoration that you're talking about. Can that all be leveled off back to great?
Great.
Thank you for coming this evening.
I like that. You gotta deliver the promises. I heard that.
Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. You always hear me up here. It is so refreshing to have other... It is so refreshing to have other people speak because I know you're actually listening to them because it's easy to just blow me off. And I've been talking about this for a long time. And I do want to emphasize, I agree with everything they said, but I do want to emphasize, you also have the North Shore. Headwaters is impacted heavily. The Faith Technology Building that is being converted into apartments will be affected heavily. And the Bonta site will be affected heavily. So just even putting the lights on the east side is an answer. I honestly don't know. I mean, talking about compromise, I don't think anyone would have a problem on the Fourth of July having red, white, and blue. But we don't need it every day of the year or Christmas, having it green and, green and red. But having, as I think Ms. Alderman Tom Grady's vacation did him good because he came back with some common sense where we don't need to have this sideshow all the time. I mean, having the decorative lighting, having the decorative railing is going to be lost on those amenities that you paid for or the stone work or anything else, the brick work, if all you're seeing are lighting. And it is true, as Alderman Nichols mentioned, this is really for the boarders. And I do want to also bring up this signage that's going on the wall next to the roundabout on the north side. The people, the Joneses, are going to be looking at that. I don't know how big this sign is going to be, but that's going to be what they look out every day when that's illuminated too. So remember that. It's very fortunate that they showed up because it's my impression this would have passed, the option that was recommended. Because if no one spoke out against it. I do want to just clarify a couple things that I've noticed in our packets. It happened with the joint agreement with Appleton and Manassia Fire Rescue. It refers to maps. The maps are not included. In the purchase agreement for Bonta, or for the Gilbert site, as Alderman Savnick pointed out, I had to look at the RDA meeting to clarify A, B, and C, what we're giving up. So when you refer to attachments, please include the attachment. Have a good night.
Seeing no one else, I would accept a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Recess.
Thank you for coming.
The University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the City of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings,